Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 24th Special City Council Meeting that I'm calling to order. This meeting is being held one week later than normal due to the Association of Washington City's conference that was held last week. After this meeting, please note that the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting immediately following this special meeting. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And we do have Councilmember Hall with us tonight, but he is remote. Thank you for joining us, Zach. First item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just.
We're going to move into audience comments, and members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. If you have signed up in advance, we will call on you first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. And if you're on the phone, you can do that by pressing star three. If you're joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. And if you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up for general audience comments or indicated desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So if you are making comments, you are invited to address the council as a whole regarding matters that are related to Issaquah programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, if you are a virtual attendee, please unmute your microphone or step here in the room, please step up to the lectern in the center, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and don't respond after your name or phone number is called or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us. City Clerk, could you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, we have three people signed up, two in the room and one person virtually. The first is in room, Corby Kessler.
Come on up, Corby. Corby, I'm going to get you to push the button in the center of the pad. That should make it light up red. No, hang on, here.
I'm high maintenance. So I'm Corby Kessler. I'm Executive Director of the Downtown Issaquah Association, and I'm honored to be here. This is the month that we're celebrating Main Street. And Main Street, both of America and Washington Main Street, has principles for economic development that we follow at DIA. And I would really like to say, on behalf of our volunteers, DIA has made some real inroads, especially this summer. We're doing quite a bit, and I hope you join us for some of these events. But Judy is in the room, too, and I wanted to let you know that this is what our volunteers do. She's leaving here immediately to go water the flowers in downtown Issaquah. So that's how dedicated our volunteers are. I'm the only staff member, but I would really like to acknowledge them, and I'm just honored to speak on their behalf. So I just wanted to say that DIA is a Main Street program. We're both affiliated with, again, the state and the federal government. And it's really a comprehensive revitalization strategy that not only looks at economic development, it's all about our businesses, of course, to make sure that they're successful, but it's also about engaging, being very inclusive of all stakeholders, whether it's visitors, it's our residents, it's our government, other nonprofits. We can't do it without all of you. It's really critical that we have this full engagement to make sure that we are successful in keeping our small businesses alive in downtown. You all know that downtown is really the heart of a lot of communities, and we are seeing that within downtown Issaquah. We recently did a study. It's called a Net Promoter Score Study. And if you don't know what that is, it's really looking at, are people advocating on behalf of Issaquah? Are they recommending to others word of mouth that, yes, we want people to come to downtown Issaquah? We're excited about your community, and we want others to come, which is really the most important marketing avenue you can go to, is this word of mouth. In this recent study, we surpassed industry average for net promoter scores, and it's considered excellent. And I'm happy to share data with you on another forum. But we doubled what other industries are doing in terms of people saying, we really recommend you visiting downtown Issaquah. It's very rare for a nonprofit to do this. I've done it in a previous life, so we're really leading the way in this avenue. So we're looking at other industries, and really, we're up there with some of the biggies. We're not quite as high as Apple or Costco, but people are really saying that they want to recommend you. So we'll aspire for some of those higher avenues. So this summer, we've seen a lot of progress with economic impact programs. I hope you all came, but we had a wine walk. When was it? It was just recently, a couple of weeks ago. But we had more than 500 people show up for that, and it was all ages. You know, obviously, only 21 and above can drink. But the best thing about our wine walk is we put the wineries inside our businesses. And so they got to know our businesses, and they didn't just go there to drink. They were eating, too. I made sure I went into all these restaurants to see, are they just drinking? No, they are sitting down and eating, and it was standing room only. It was really gratifying to see that this economic impact program is really working. The same was true with Fenders. Fenders on Front, I hope many of you, again, have gone to these, but we had about 7,000 people. And I get teased for using this as a metric, but I saw over 200 lawn chairs. And the reason I call that out is because people feel that this is their community. They are sitting down, they're making a day of it, they're spending time in Issaquah, which means they're frequenting our businesses. And our businesses and the visitors that I interviewed told us, I didn't know these businesses were there. I'm coming back. And that is what we're looking for. And we heard this from the artists along Front Street, we heard it from restaurants, we heard it from a number of different businesses. And during Fenders, we had people lined out the door even before some of these restaurants opened. People were drinking at stands before 10:00 a.m. But, you know, whatever floats, they're boat. So we're very proud of what we've done. Make Music Day is another example of how we are making a difference. I talked to several people who said that normally they just commute right on through Front Street. They stopped, they wanted to know what was going on. That is what we need. We need something going on where people are saying, there's some activity here. We don't want to just go home, let's see what's going on, and stop, listen to the music, you know, have this camaraderie with other community members. That's exactly what we're looking for. So bottom line, small businesses are vital to our community, and that's what we're all about. And we want to make sure that we are representing them in the best way possible. And I think we couldn't do it without all of you. The city has been phenomenal about supporting us. LTAC for Fenders, we had people staying overnight, so we're supporting the motels and hotels in the area. This is what we want to do. Is that me?
Yeah, Corby, if you just want to take a second to summarize, that'd be great.
Okay, I just want to summarize by saying, I invite all of you. I sent an email about coming to visit us to learn more about Main Street, meet with our businesses. We have some representatives from the state and the senator coming to talk about it as well. So I'd love to hear from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corby. City Clerk, who's up next?
Judy Eklund.
Come on up, Judy.
Hi, I'm Judy Eklund. I volunteer with the Downtown Issaquah Association. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, for recognizing the Washington Main Street anniversary this month. I started volunteering for the Downtown Issaquah Association when I moved here in 2009, and a few years later, I joined the board. During the COVID pandemic, I became more involved and became more appreciative of all that DIA was able to contribute in helping our small downtown businesses. I volunteer because community is important to me. I've made many new friends here and business acquaintances, and I strive to help our businesses succeed. And I'm always happy to share my DIA volunteer experiences with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy. City Clerk, who's next up?
Excuse me. Next, we have a virtual attendee, Robert Lurch. Robert, I'll be making you a panelist now. You should see an option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Well, good evening, all. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. My name is Robert Lurch, no laughing, and I'm one of the owners of Pickles Playland. I heard somebody snicker. Additionally, I am a current member of the DIA Economic Development Committee, and also my partner, Nikki Johnson, is also a committee member. So Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm virtually here tonight to invite you to come and celebrate Washington State Main Street. So for those of you who don't know, Pickles Playland is located right on Front Street. We're nestled in between H&amp;H and Vina Bello, so it's a great place to get a drink. And also, we have a beer and wine license, too. So we moved to Issaquah, opened our store in Issaquah in September of last year, so we're fairly new to the downtown scene. But that being said, I lived in Issaquah for 20 years. Both my kids graduated from Issaquah High School, so for opening a location in Issaquah was like a homecoming for me. And a little background on Pickles. Pickles is actually a real dog. For you that don't know, Pickles Playland is a boutique doggy daycare and grooming salon. And we're named after a little hippo that was dumped on the side of 520 when he was just a little pup, and turned out that he ended up being 100 pounds of dumb. He was Kane Corso, which is an Italian Mastiff pit bull, and he was the sweetest dumbest boy ever. And so we opened, started opening a doggy daycare because nobody, he felt uncomfortable anyplace else. And my partner and I, in six years, we've opened three locations. We have 25 employees, including the one in Issaquah, so one in Kirkland, one in Redmond, and then the one in Issaquah. And not to brag, but I'm going to do a little bit here, so you know who you're talking, who we are and how we fit downtown. But of the past two years, 425 Magazine has named us the best dog daycare on the east side of Seattle. And likewise, last year, right when we opened, the Seattle Times ranked us as the best dog daycare in the entire Pacific Northwest. So we feel like we're a value add to the community. And so why are we members? Because both my partner and I are members of DIA. Well, in all candor, we've been in the Kirkland-Redmond area for about six years, and we're not a part of any association or any group in those communities. But Issaquah was different. Right from the get-go, I'm embarrassed, Christina isn't there, the president of DIA, but even before the ink dried on our lease, and I'm not kidding, even before the ink dried on our lease, she had reached out to us and welcomed us to the community and offered her assistance in introducing us to other members, other business, small business owners up and down the downtown corridor. And frankly, that type of welcoming, that type of communication just doesn't happen in other communities, at least not that we've experienced. And it truly builds a sense of community. And I know sometimes people use that as sort of like this really superficial platitude, but in our experience, this was revelatory, and it was real. And right from the get-go, I mean, we started using her, her being Christina, once we introduced some folks, we asked her advice on zoning, on parking, on events coming up, and we got integrated into the system, into the, not system, into the downtown community almost from the get-go. And again, that just doesn't happen other places, not in our experience. So when DIA asked for committee members, both my partner and I volunteered, we raised our hands. Now, we're not watering plants, but still, we volunteered. And we also open our doors to those events that Corby spoke about, the wine walks, the art walks. We open our doors for free and have, and for other vendors to come and set up in there just because we want to be part of that community, because we believe truly that a healthy and verdant downtown is essential for a business, essentially for a city and for the small businesses that operate there. So I guess in closing, I want to say, I want to ask you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, could you also join the DIA in celebrating Washington State Main Street with us? And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. You forgot to mention about the lineup of puppies you have when you start your puppy training program. I know people who just come to look at the puppies outside of your store.
Well, if I still have five minutes, yeah, if I still have any time. So we do Puppy Education Hour on Saturday morning. And I, well, so I get to make up my own title since I'm the owner. And so again, we have a beer and wine license, so my title is Director of Wine and Puppies, because I don't want to make everybody feel bad about their life choices. I'm going to try to shoehorn chocolate in there someplace or really make everybody feel bad when I send a mail. But, but yeah, so when we have Puppy Hour, we'll have a whole litany of different people with their little pups, and they're all playing, harassing outside because they want to come in and socialize, and it's better than a sharp stick in the eye. I know I've had a sharp stick in the eye, and this is substantially better. So, and I speak too quickly, sorry about that. But you guys have a great meeting, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Robert. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
Just see, we had someone else join us virtually, but I'm not seeing that they're raising their hand to make public comment, so no.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you, Corby, Judy, and Robert for coming and talking about DIA's impact, the upcoming event, volunteer experiences, and puppies. That's a great combination. Thanks a lot. As a reminder, folks can make comments and submit them to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. The next item of business is a consent calendar, and I do not have any remarks on this consent calendar, but I wanted to see if any of the committee chairs or chair designees would like to report on any of the consent. I'm seeing head nods, no. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I'm not seeing any indication to do so. Is there a motion? Council President?
Yep. I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing any indication, keeping my eyes on Councilmember Hall. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously, 7-0. Next item of business on regular business is AB 8762, the Hillside Park Bid Award. The request before council this evening is award of the bid and authorization of the funding. So I'd like to invite Parks Community Services Director Jeff Watling to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director. No PowerPoint tonight, so you just, you just get me happy to provide a quick overview on this agenda bill. We're seeking for you to award the construction contract for the Hillside Park improvements and wetland mitigation, and also seeking additional funding for this project that I will highlight in my report. It's also in the written report. But first, a little bit about the project itself. Design was completed and greatly informed by extensive community outreach that began in 2021 and really continued throughout this project. I know some of you attended that first public meeting. You may recall how emotional that was, how divisive it felt. There felt to be a huge difference of opinion between preserving the character of that park and adding needed amenities. Throughout the concept design process, it was really great to see by the time we got to the final proposed concept, which is before you, in the bid award tonight, 86% of respondents supported and felt like that final project or that final concept really blended preservation of the site and the importance of the character of the site and added amenities. So really felt like that outreach made a lot of, a lot of inroads in finding common ground. The project itself within the park will add a new nature-inspired play area, improved ADA access from the entrance down to the play area and seating areas and the field. We'll also add more seating for picnicking and seating, improve field drainage, so better function of the field, and a trail connection around Upper Hillside Cemetery, where currently there's a bit of a trail conflict as people walk directly through Upper Hillside Cemetery. This will provide a more separated route. Through this process and through this project, first for me in my career, a wetland was identified on the existing field. That became increasingly complex to try and address. And so what's before you tonight is also seeking full wetland mitigation. We went back out to the community when that wetland was discovered and asked them, realizing that a functioning wetland and a field can't coexist, what was more important to them? It was pretty clear and unanimous amongst the neighbors that they wanted and felt that the importance of that field and the function of that field did so much for their neighborhood, and to lose that would be detrimental. We worked very extensively with not only our own planning and permitting department, but State Department of Ecology in deciding and identifying where to best locate that wetland, that full mitigation. We identified a space on Park Point, which is property we currently own. This bid award includes that wetland mitigation, which is about 6,000 square feet of new wetland created closer to the creek and a better function with other wetlands, as well as about 50,000, over 50,000 square feet of wetland buffer that we needed to enhance and create. So a pretty extensive project there. So in this, that's a little bit of the outline of the project. As we opened bids earlier this month, we had one responsive bidder, A1 Landscaping. Their bid, much like many of the bidding climate these days, came in higher than we estimated, given increasing cost of materials and labor. We identified that we needed to seek some additional funding. We worked very closely with the finance department and identified three funding sources that would not impact a general fund balance. Those three funding sources are within our Parks capital budget. Those three proposed funded, funding sources in the agenda bill that you'll see are the Parks levy proceeds, seeking an additional $318,000 within levy proceeds, forgive me, $200,000 additional funds from Park Impact fees, given the capacity building nature of this project with a new play area on site, and $206,000 from another project, PK44, which is our park signage wayfinding project. That project was completed, first phase was completed earlier this year under budget. There is enough of a fund balance that this $206,000 could be considered to be reallocated to this project, still leaving about $250,000 in that wayfinding project to decide what we might want to do with Phase Two, should you decide to reauthorize that. Separate decision, that's not a decision, obviously, tonight. A little bit is why we feel we need this additional funding. Obviously, that wetland creation was a new element to this project, not only the creation of the wetland, but the additional permitting costs and design costs that were incurred, the fact that we now have two sites that we'll be managing as part of this project, and then, as I said earlier, the current bid climate. We're seeing higher, higher bids coming in on a number of city projects. So with your possible award tonight of this bid, we do realize this is an additional public investment, but we feel confident that the result of this work will be not only a much improved neighborhood park for that Squawk Mountain communities and neighborhoods, but we also feel like it will result in a better functioning wetland within the Issaquah Creek Basin. That's the end of my staff report. Robin Spear, our Park Planning and Development Manager and Project Manager, are here if you have any questions.
Council questions? Looking around, not seeing any questions. Would someone care to make a motion then? I think Tollit would like. That's Mayor Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to award the construction contract, including bid alternates one and two, excluding bid alternate three for the Hillside Park and Wetland Mitigation Improvements Project in the amount of $1,384,737, including sales tax, to A1 Landscaping Construction Incorporated, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the related agreement. And authorize inclusion of $724,612, $318,392 from the 2020 to 2025 King County levy, $200,000 from the Park Impact, from Park Impact fees, and $206,220 from PK044 Wayfinding and Park Signage Implementation Project to PK031 in a subsequent 2024 budget amendment, increasing the project total to $1,838,366.
The President? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Council discussion? That's Mayor Mertz.
Well, this is very exciting. I still live on Squawk Mountain. We still look with envious eyes upon Talis and the Highlands and the wonderful park facilities they have there. We have wonderful trailheads off into the woods, but we don't have something like this high up on the mountain, and it's going to make such a difference for kids that live in the neighborhood. My kids are a little too old to play there. They may still probably pick a black bear or two when they, when they visit. But this is, you know, I commend the Parks Department. It was a challenging conversation initially, and to come up with a design that, that would not in any way make Gaudi a location that was so important to so many people in the community, this is just a wonderful way to both accomplish something for the kids, but also have the adults be able to continue to have a similar character to the location. So I really, really applaud the efforts and believe this will be a real, you know, there's 5,000 people on Squawk Mountain, and this will be a real resource for kids and their parents. So I'm incredibly supportive.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Any other comments? Ah, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Also, very supportive. This is a long time coming, and it will definitely be a big community asset for especially the families with young children up there who can now use this playground, which is really exciting for that neighborhood, which really doesn't have anything like that right now. I also wanted to commend you for the action on the wetlands. I know that was kind of a curveball and unexpected, and to be adding, add a functional wetlands and to make sure that we're taking care of our, our functional wetlands and better taking care of the creek buffer there, that makes a lot of sense to me. And so I also appreciate that aspect of this project.
Thank you. Any other comments? Looking at Councilmember Hall, all looks good. So I'll reread the motion. It's been moved and seconded to award the construction contract, including bid alternatives one and two, and excluding bid alternative three for the Hillside Park and Wetland Mitigation Improvements Project in the amount of $1,384,737, including sales tax, to A1 Landscaping and Construction, Inc., and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the related agreement, and authorize inclusion of $724,612, $318,392 from the 2022 to 2025 King County levy, $200,000 from Parks Impact fees, and $206,220 from PK044 Wayfinding and Park Signage Implementation Project to Project PK031 in a subsequent 2024 budget amendment, increasing the project total to 1.838 million. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. The next item of business this evening on our short meeting is committee and regional reports, and I'll head over to Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which was mentioned in the comments from the public this evening, will be meeting on July 18th. There was previously a meeting scheduled for June 26th that had to be rescheduled. The new meeting date is July 18th. Cascade Water Alliance, first if I can take a moment of personal privilege, is having their 25th anniversary on the 27th of June from 11:30 to 1:30 in Bellevue. If you haven't registered for it, please do. It should be a great event, celebrating 25 years of bringing water to Issaquah. The Public Affairs Committee for Cascade Water Alliance was going to have a meeting on July 3rd, but canceled mercifully, thank you. The board meeting for Cascade Water Alliance is the 26th of June at 3:30 p.m. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Bear with me, I have kind of a lengthy report this evening. So first, for Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors, last met on Thursday, June 13th. We had a number of promotions to engineer. It's always nice to see the promotions at our board meetings and all their families come together for photos. We also had a presentation on the agency's technical rescue deployment model. So that presentation has been shared with you in case you're interested in learning more, but essentially, staff shared how the need for technical rescues, especially trail rescues, like those at Puka Point, are on the rise as more and more people come to the Isquah Alps and beyond for recreation. And where previously, a ladder truck, a literal ladder truck, would be sent up to respond to these situations, imagine the service road for Puka Point, a ladder truck driving up there. Staff are now proposing using two modified Ford F-350s, which is a trend that staff have been following closely across the country. This change would actually cost less than we've This change would actually cost less than we've currently budgeted for this and would be much easier to maneuver in difficult terrain, amongst other positives. So that was a very cool presentation that I shared out with you earlier today, and let me or Councilmember Mertz or Council President Walsh know if you have any questions, and we can get those answered for you. Some updates from the fire chiefs briefing that I thought were worth sharing with everyone. King County Fire District 45, or Duval, is holding a special meeting in early next month to vote on a contract for services with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and it will be presented to us at the next board meeting on July 11th. Chief Lane will also be presenting a new leadership structure for the agency at our next meeting to accommodate the added responsibilities of that contract, and we'll be sure to share those organizational charts with you then. Earlier this month, the fire chiefs and union reps of Duval, Eastside Fire and Rescue, Fall City, and Snoqualmie all met to discuss expanding their shared staffing agreement to include Eastside Fire and Rescue. So essentially, during chimes of shortage, each department can call on partners to help with staffing, resource sharing. So that's good news for our organizations, obviously, but also very good for our relationship building with Fall City and Snoqualmie, and we thought that was worth sharing with everyone. Another heads up, we heard that Redmond Fire Department will be officially presenting a proposal to form a regional fire authority to their city council next month, so that will be very interesting to watch. The King County EMS Levy Planning Committee and subcommittees are well underway, if you don't already know. At the last meeting of the BLS Subcommittee, that's Basic Life Support, so how we pay for our EMS services. It sounds like there was a pretty extensive conversation about adjusting the funding model for the levy for those services. Right now, it's based on 50% call volume and 50% assessed value, and it seems like the committee is interested in moving that, shifting that to a 60% call volume, 40% assessed value. So we'll keep you updated on how that develops and what kind of impact that might have on our agency and here in Issaquah. Oh, finally, just for fun, we wanted to, I wanted to share that the Seattle Channel, EFER participated in the Seattle Channel documentary called "The Fight Against Fentanyl" to talk about our Narcan Leave Behind Kit program, which you may remember, last year I gave a little update on that, and that was a kind of first, the first of the West Coast kind of thing to do, definitely first in the state to do. And anyways, that film won a Northwest Regional Emmy Award, so I thought that was kind of cool, thought I'd share that with you. And the next meeting of the Finance and Administration Committee is this coming Wednesday at noon at our headquarters on Newport Way. We'll be talking about the budget at that meeting, and Deputy City Administrator Snyder will be joining me. And then at the next meeting of the full board is on July 11th at 4:00 p.m. One more update, I was also able to attend my first meeting of the Eastside Transportation Partnership on June 14th. I am Issaquah's newest representative behind Deputy Council President D. Michelle, who is the chair of that organization and universally adored by everyone on that partnership. We heard presentations from King County Metro and Washington State Department of Transportation focused on safety and security. We also shared those presentations with you in case you'd like to get into it a bit more, but kind of at a high level, there were some things that Deputy Council President and I wanted to share with everyone. First, King County Metro showed us data that incidents are down since the pandemic, and drug incidences in particular are down 34%, which is good news and trending in the right direction. Originally, data showed that there was a spike, but they were able to show us that that was actually due to a fall in ridership at the same time, not necessarily an increase in incidents, and the data was shown as per capita rides, so it was a little misleading. They walked us through what contributes to safety and security and what their three pillars are, which is built environment, uniformed presence, and support, all about shifting from that kind of traditional model of security to a care and presence model of security, which we thought was very interesting, and it seems like their pilot programs are very successful with regard to behavioral health navigators or specialists and safe ambassadors as well. With Washington State Department of Transportation, they gave us a really quick presentation because we spent so much time with Metro, but they were talking to us about how traffic fatalities are way up and are continuing to go up in Washington. In 2023, there were 810 traffic fatalities in the state, which is the highest it's been in the last 10 years. They're noticing a marked increase in speeding, in reckless driving, in impaired driving all over the state, and so they see pedestrian and bicycle program projects as critical to, you know, both empowering active transportation, but also reducing traffic fatalities. So they walked us through some of the projects that they funded across the state and talked a lot about how complete streets build that more balanced and equitable and resilient transportation system, which, of course, we in Issaquah know very well, we're big fans of complete streets, so that was great to hear. And our next meeting of Eastside Transportation Partnership is on Friday, July 12th at 8:00 a.m. over Zoom. Thank you for bearing with me, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for the warning. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. There was no meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee in the month of June, and so I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Ray?
That's a tough one to follow. The Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee is meeting immediately after this meeting this evening to discuss the Black Nugget Retaining Wall Replacement Project Landscaping Standards. And then I also wanted to note that the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting on July 9th and has a single agenda item, which is solid waste contract administrative fees, because I'm not sure that we would have a chance to talk about that before then, and that concludes my report.
You, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, June 12th. We were going to maybe get an update on the PICK Operating Policies update, but that has been deferred. We had a discussion about a recommendation to the Executive Board on regional alignment on asylum and refugee crisis, and I would have loved to discuss it with our council, but we received it about three hours before the meeting started, and it was due about 48 hours after the meeting. So there was zero opportunity to bring it back to council. That is extremely unfortunate. Council Services Safety and Parks Committee will be meeting tomorrow, 6:30, here in council chambers. We have two issues, COM 0013, Park System Plan Update, that is very exciting, and COM 0052, Credit Card Fee Cost Recovery, maybe not quite as exciting, but also important. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President D. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On June 10th, the Regional Transit Committee was provided with a tour of the Metro Transit Control Center. And pardon me, but I'm going to geek out on this because it was just fantastic. We got a real appreciation for the massive data center in which at least one dispatcher out of the 10 to 12 that they have onsite at any given time is in touch with every single bus in the metro system at any given time. The setup is very similar to our police dispatch center, except the room is massive and there are 10 to 12 stations rather than the three that we have in our center. The tour guide said that they receive around 200,000 inquiries per month coming from customers, bus drivers, police and fire, cities, county, school district, and so forth, everything from a customer wondering why their bus hasn't arrived yet, to a city staff member calling, to a, to a bus driver requesting assistance for a medical emergency, or a city staff member calling to advise of an emergency road closure, and on and on and on. Their highest time of pressure is during snow events, or when there is a massive protest like the Women's March in downtown Seattle, or the protests that took place during the Black Lives Matters. And so, all hands on deck during those kinds of situations. They also have this fantastic software, and this is really for transit nerds, but they have this fantastic software where you can watch all of the buses on a single route and how they are progressing around their route, and then they talk to the buses and they tell them whether to slow down or go faster so that all the buses don't bunch up or all the buses aren't delayed. And yeah, it is fantastic. You're watching the routes like this, and the dispatchers are talking to them. So anyway, there was just a whole bunch of amazing data and graphics and conversations with the dispatchers. I think I mentioned on our tour of the fire station that they have the same issues there about what emergency calls come in, the stress on the whole environment is constant, and so they are also, just like our fire station is looking for a different kind of noise to signal an emergency, they are also doing the same kind of research to reduce the stress on their dispatcher. Anyway, it was nerd heaven for all of us transit nerds, so. And then on June 13th, the Eastside Human Services Forum held its regular board meeting, and we got a report from Lisa, Representative Lisa Callen, on the investments made in behavioral health during the last legislative session. And very briefly, the legislature invested millions of dollars into improvements for youth and adults experiencing both mental illness and substance abuse disorders. It was a historic investment and one that is, was long overdue and one that really needs to be built on, and I have to commend Representative Callen for her investment of time and effort in ensuring that that investment continues forward. She is currently working, and she talked about this, across the state, she actually came into the meeting from Spokane, where she was meeting with healthcare people in that area to develop a statewide continuum of care. And I've often used the word broken when I talk about the substance abuse and mental health system in Washington State. Representative Callen is doing her best to work to reform that system and to make sure that we have a rational and logical system instead of the patchwork system that we have now. She is expecting that those conversations and efforts will yield results in the next legislative session, and so I also want to, I commend Representative Callen, but also another one of our representatives, Representative San is also very much involved in that effort. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President Walsh?
I'm going to be boring and say no report. Thank you.
Real mix of reports this evening. For the mayor's report, there will be no executive session this evening, but I did want to give a couple of updates. So first one is the Sister Cities update. I recently traveled to Morocco to help deliver the donated items to those most impacted by the September 2023 earthquake. Our community in close partnership with Moroccan-American groups helped to ship over 17,000 cold weather items and 200 computers. For more information, I just put a newsletter out, which you can find at isquahwa.gov/mayor, but big thank you to Mayor Safiani and our sister city, Chishauan, Morocco. What's next? The Sister City Commission and the Arts Commission are working together to bring an artist from Chishauan to Issaquah this October. This includes school visits and participation at the Issaquah Salmon Days Festival. The featured artists will engage with students, teachers, and the community to share the Moroccan culture and to demonstrate their craft. A few upcoming events. The Energy Smart Eastside, heat pumps, cool incentives. Heat pumps are an efficient way to heat and cool your home, but how do they work? Do they work in cold weather, and aren't they expensive? For more information, join Energy Smart Eastside online tomorrow, June 25th at 6:00 p.m. for a practical overview of heat pumps for homeowners. We'll cover technologies, efficiency ratings, what to ask your contractor, and how to stack your rebates and incentives to get the most value. So for more information, please visit our website, isquahwa.gov. The Heritage and Natural History Tour, Confluence Park and Gilman Village. On June 26th, we will have a guided tour of Confluence Park and Gilman Village. You will hear stories of some of the earliest families to arrive here and learn about the landscape they encountered and compare it with what is here now. Then in collaboration with the Issaquah History Museum and the city of Issaquah, the tours will blend the stories of people and landscape that shaped our town. To register, please visit isquahwa.gov. And Concerts on the Green. Every summer, Concerts on the Green presents free, family-friendly concerts in a beautiful outdoor setting on the Issaquah Community Center green. The series starts in July and continues every Tuesday through the last Tuesday in August. For more details, you can look at our website. And also, Issaquah's Down Home Fourth of July Celebration. This event will commence with the parade at 11:00 a.m., and then family fun activities will be available at the community center until 2:00 p.m. For more information, there is more information on our website. And City Hall will be closed on Thursday, July 4th and Friday, July 5th for the holiday. That concludes the mayor's report. Good of the Order. Are there any items for Good of the Order? Councilmember Hall, then Council, or sorry, Councilmember Hunt, and then Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On June 15th, I was able to join the Pride events that the city hosted, so that was a welcoming Pride Perspectives panel, and there were members, speakers from Jen Pride, Pride Across the Bridge, Lambert House, and Issaquah High School Saga Club. This is the third time that the city has participated in this panel, and I've been able to attend and have learned something every time, and I really encourage checking out the video, which I just checked, and the video is available, so you can see the conversation that was had.
Great, thank you.
And thank you to all of the staff members that made it possible.
That was great. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know members of the council have received the email from Sound Cities Association. They're having their networking dinner on June 26th at 5:30 in Renton, if you're able to attend. Also, put on your calendars the Port Unplugged event on July 17th. It is being held at Pickering Barn here in town, so it's really a great event to go to. It gives us a chance, it gives us a chance to meet other electeds and talk about issues such as economic development, crews, and tourism, and also the good things that are happening at the Seattle International Airport. The guest speaker will be Beth Knox from the Seattle Sports Commission. This is priming us for the FIFA World Cup that's coming in 2026. There are a number of different things that we can do as a region to make that a great event and tout the great things that we have in our natural environment, as well as our wonderful cities here on the east side. So if you can attend on the 17th at 5:00 p.m. at Pickering Barn, I'd encourage you to do it. I attended the one in Woodinville last year, and it was just a great event.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, Council Deputy President D. Michelle?
So just in regard to Concerts on the Green, just a reminder to everybody that there is a hamburger and hot dog stand that you will want to stop by and get some of the best hamburgers there are around and have those during the concert.
Thank you. Any other Good of the Order items? Not seeing any. There are a couple upcoming council meetings. Monday, July 8th is the regular city council meeting, and this meeting is being held one week later than normal to avoid having a meeting in the week of the Fourth of July holiday. Tentative agenda items include the Issaquah Climate Action Plan midpoint check-in. On Monday, July 15th, there is a committee of the whole meeting. This meeting will start at 5:30 p.m. at the King County District Court, and will include a tour of the District Court, Fire Station 72, and the Redmond Police Department. There is no executive session this evening, so before we adjourn, I just wanted to give a reminder that the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting immediately following the special meeting. The same WebEx meeting will be used. Virtual attendees wanting to attend the committee meeting, please stay in the virtual meeting, and there'll be a short break before the committee meeting starts to allow the special meeting attendees to exit. So there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 7:17 p.m. Thanks. Councilmember Hall, we're getting ready to call back to order as a heads up.
All right, Chance, we ready?
Councilmember Hall, can you hear us okay? We coming through?
Yep, all good.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. I am Councilmember Chris Ray, and I'm going to call to order the June 24th, 2024 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. With me this evening are Deputy Council President Barbara D. Michelle and Councilmember Zach Hall is joining us remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you may make public comments after the presentation and council question-answer period at tonight's Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who've signed up in advance will be, may comments will be called first. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed up for comment this evening?
No, and it doesn't appear that we have anyone from the public in our virtual meeting room nor in our physical meeting room tonight.
I am heartbroken. Okay, then we are going to move on to our first and only, oh, that's not true. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to see if there's any objection to approving the minutes from our May 14th meeting. Any objection? Without objection, the minutes of the May 14th meeting are approved. Now we'll move into our one agenda item, which is COM 0058, Black Nugget Wall Project, TR 033 Landscaping Standards, and Jim Jacoby, Senior Transportation Engineer, will be presenting this evening. So Jim, or Director Emily Moon, maybe first, huh?
I just wanted to let committee members know, this is Jim's first presentation. He is one of our new, but not so new. He joined us in February of last year, transportation engineers, and we're really lucky to have him because Jim's background includes geotechnical expertise. And so that's been a fantastic thing to add to our staff.
Well, Jim, welcome to the city and welcome to your first council committee meeting. We were pretty nice.
Well, thank you. All right, well, thank you, councilmembers. My name is Jim Jacoby. I'm a senior transportation engineer with Public Works. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Black Nugget Retaining Wall Project, the landscaping standards that relate to that. So the purpose for this presentation tonight is the Black Nugget Wall Project has limited adjacent roadway, adjacent to the wall. So the existing southeast Black Nugget Road next to the wall and design alternatives for the road do not meet current city of Isqwa street standards. So the direction we're asking for tonight is administration would like approval to proceed with public engagement on non-co-compliant roadway sections for Black Nugget Road that provide more objection for critical areas. Get more into that in a little bit. So here's an aerial view of the project. So the wall itself is the large red line you see in the middle. For reference, the white rectangle in the center is the roof of Fred Meyer. So this wall and the adjacent road are directly behind the Fred Meyer and Home Depot. So kind of above and to the right of the wall, there's a steep slope, a critical area. Taking a look at the other view of the project. So this is looking down at an angle at the wall from above Fred Meyer down in there in the center of the photo. The wall itself is about 1,000 feet long and up to 35 feet high in some places. As I said, there's a steep slope above the wall, and you have obviously the roadway adjacent to the wall, and then on the other side of that, you have another steep slope, existing trees, and then a retaining wall not owned by the city behind the Fred Meyer Lot of constraints on the space. So some background and history of the project. The wall itself and Black Nugget Road were constructed-
Okay, Jim, a quick question.
Sure.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
Yeah, just a quick question. So we don't own that wall. Do, we own the wall, do we own the land adjacent to that wall, or do we just own the wall?
So we'll look at that here in a second, but there's, we own the wall uphill from the road and the road, but not the wall below the road.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm more concerned about, do we have right-of-way on the other side of that wall that we own in the area where the dirt is, the fill, and so forth?
Not much.
Not much, okay.
Yeah, most of that is privately owned.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
So the wall and Black Nugget Road were constructed in 1999, 2000 by a private developer. At the time, that was King County jurisdiction. The city later annexed that in 2000 as part of the north Isqwa annexation. From 2010 to 2020, the city noticed, started noticing deterioration of the wall, conducted several repairs during that time. Then in 2021 and 2022, the city hired engineers to do evaluations on the wall. The engineers noted corrosion to structural elements of the wall and recommended replacing the wall, which is ultimately why we're looking at this project now. So here's some current pictures of the wall. You can see, in the upper picture, you can see the X and some of these kind of diagonal-looking pieces. Those are some of the repairs that were done. You notice all the dark spots where water is seeping through the wall. It's not shown in this photo, but there's several places where there's vines and vegetation growing through the wall, so it's not in great shape. So some additional background, the administration brought a similar question to this committee on another project, Squawk Mountain, back in April. So that project had a similar question, not wanting to disturb mature trees and existing critical areas. So kind of a similar situation here where we have a steep slope, critical area above the wall, we're not wanting to disturb that. So the committee in the April meeting gave direction to the administration to amend the street standards to allow for more protection of existing trees and critical areas. So that's similar to what we're asking for tonight. So for reference, here are the current street standards for roadways like Black Nugget Road. So on the left, you have a five-foot sidewalk, then a five-foot planter strip, five-foot bike lane, the two travel lanes in either direction, and on the other side, you have five-foot bike lane, another five-foot planter strip, and another five-foot sidewalk. So you add all those up, it's about 53 feet of width that you need minimum. That will not be on the quiz later. So if we look at what is existing, you have the wall on the right there, and directly adjacent to that, you have the sidewalk. There's very little gap in most places between the sidewalk and the wall. Then you have 12-foot travel lane, a 12-foot center turn lane, another 12-foot travel lane, and a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk on the other side, which is about 47 feet total. So a little less than the 53 that we would need minimum to meet the current standard section. So if we look in the next slide, superimposed what that would look like for this project if we were to try to meet current street standards. And you can see, we would need more than five feet of additional space into the existing wall and into that steep hillside. So several feet of critical area impact, not only for the wall itself, but above that to construct it. You can see the existing right-of-way line is a little to the left, so we would need to purchase additional right-of-way as well, so it'd be pretty difficult.
Give me a quick question before you march off this one. So you're, to create additional real estate, you're proposing, I guess, moving the wall back into the hillside. And then I guess I want to poke a little bit, I think at the same place that Deputy Council President D. Michelle was going. On the west side of the road, there are, there's some grass before you get to the wall, and it's got some trees in it, and that's what I see from the aerial view. Is that private property, or is that part of our right-of-way, or is that already accounted for?
So some of that is our right-of-way. You can see kind of the dash line on the left of the picture here. That's our right-of-way line. So we do own a little bit of that. There's some other factors here, though. This graphic doesn't show it quite well, but it is also a steep slope area to the left side there, as well as, you know, if we try to move the roadway to the left, that would impact those existing trees, and would also impact the existing wall that the city does not own behind Fred Meyer. So we would potentially, you know, need to mitigate that and, you know, do some repair and upgrade to a wall that the city doesn't own.
Great, thanks.
Yeah. So as I said, critical area impact would be the geologically hazardous area or the steep slope above the wall. If we were to try to meet current street standards, it also goes against, you know, city policy and goal in the comprehensive plan to conserve and protect environmentally So here's another nice photo. This one actually shows some of the vines and things growing through the wall currently. Talk about some analysis. CPD previously determined for Squawk Mountain that only a safety issue could warrant a deviation away from the landscaping or planter strip rule within the street standards. So our recommended designs currently for Black Nugget Wall do not include a planter strip due to impacts to the critical area, you know, the limited space, as we talked about, and significantly increased costs. So taking a look at some of the options that we're considering currently, this would place the new wall, a new wall, in front of the existing wall. So if you see on the far right, it kind of grayed out, very light-colored, that's the existing wall. So directly in front of that would be a new wall. We would lose about two feet of usable right-of-way there with this option. We can make that up by reducing the size of the travel lanes from 12 feet down to 11 feet. Essentially, very similar section to what's there currently without impacting critical And here's a very similar option. So same situation with the existing wall, a new wall, about two feet sticking out in front of it. But instead, in this case, instead of keeping the center turn lane, we would add two five-foot bike lanes. All right, so our options are, one, support adjustment to the street standards, share design alternatives with the community with assumption that council will adopt and amend the street standards that will provide more flexibility to protect existing critical areas. Or two, do not support adjustment to street standards and provide community members only design alternatives that meet code at significant additional expense to the city and impact to the existing critical area. And the administration's recommendation, or the administration requests permission to present non-co-compliant road sections to TAB and the public. Kind of our next steps, assuming the committee agrees, we would like to present to TAB, actually later this week. And depending on feedback from TAB, we would potentially seek additional public feedback. And then hopefully, you know, if no significant changes are needed, we will bring the preferred wall and road alternative back to this committee and then eventually to full council.
Outstanding, Jim. Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Hall, I'm going to, with your big yellow hand, I'm going to go with you first.
That's perfect. Thank you very much. I have three questions. So first of all, thank you for highlighting the need here and coming to council. I'm just curious, the top two questions are just curiosities, but have we considered any design alternatives that meet the landscaping part of street standards, like half, how do I, how do I say this? Is it possible to adhere to the street standards on just one side of the road? Have we explored that option?
Yes, I don't have it shown here, but if I go back to the, one of the options here, we could replace the bike lane on the right side of the picture here with a landscaping strip. You know, the thought being that people riding down that steep hill on Black Nugget Road on a bike could easily get up to speed limit of vehicles without needing a separate bike lane. So that is a potential option for one side of the road.
Okay, and so it is, these are all things that you're considering, nothing is set in stone?
Right. Right.
Essentially, okay. And you bring up vehicle speeds, that stretch of road in particular, yeah, people coast down, down that road pretty quickly, so I'm curious, for the roadway adjustments, is the, does that include traffic calming measures? I mean, shortening the travel lanes is ineffective, is traffic calming, but is that part of the scope of this project at all?
No, the main focus of this project is the wall itself, you know, the safety risk of leaving a deteriorating wall alone. So that's the main focus, really.
I guess my other question is, since this is the second time, yeah, this is very similar to up on Squawk Mountain, and I'm very much looking forward to that conversation on street standards. It does seem clear, and this is leading up to a question, it does seem clear to me that public safety isn't the only rationale that benefits public good. We had existing tree retention up on Squawk, driveway impacts, and now we have critical area impacts, potentially even cost could be a factor worth considering in the public good. But it's also important to look at, you know, the public good of these landscaping requirements because we put them there for a reason, right? And they exist for a reason. So I'm curious, and I'm not sure who's best to address this question to, but are we planning to have a council policy discussion on this before updates are actually proposed in 2025? It seemed to me like it might be good to get kind of high-level guidance from the full council on when and when not to follow these kinds of street standards. Maybe that's for Director Moon or John.
Sure, I can answer that. Our plan right now is to bring those proposed street standard, I'll say deviation criteria to you later this fall or certainly by the end of the year. So we're gonna have a conversation, policy conversation with TAB, we want to get their input first, and we'll have the same sort of policy conversation with the committee. And then the hope would be, we'd be able to bring all of that forward in early 2025.
Okay, perfect. So everything, everything is nicely planned then. Okay, no, I appreciate that, that's good. And it would be good, too, to get a sense of, and maybe you have kind of just a sense off the back of your hand, but like, how many projects that are currently envisaged or envisioned by the city might be impacted by this kind of problem? Like, do we have a sense of kind of scale here?
Councilmember, that's an excellent question. I see John maybe has a better handle on how many additional projects might need similar consideration.
I'm not aware of any projects that would need additional consideration for the landscaping standard, but that's and Squawk are the only few that we have that anticipate asking this question.
All right, thanks very much. Those are my questions for now.
Deputy Council President, any questions from you?
No, Councilmember Hall answered, asked the questions that I was going to ask, so I will, I will defer to you.
Well, there are three members of the committee, three questions, so one for each of us, right?
Yeah, right.
No, I don't have any additional questions either. I have some thoughts, but I'll, I'll save those until we get to that point of the program, so. All right, let's kind of wrap it up and then let's kind of talk about what we want to do. Jim, you want to give me final, final stuff from you?
Yeah, sorry. Forgot I.
Give me that direction needed slide, that's the one I'm looking for.
Yes, that's the one I forgot to show you.
Outstanding, great. All right, comments, discussion, deliberation, counsel, Deputy Council President DeMichele.
So I think that Councilmember Hall and I are thinking about the same direction. First of all, so you, just so you understand where I'm coming from, I do agree that the street standards on this should be revised or adjusted. However, this is, to me, this is a little bit different situation than the one on Squawk. On Squawk, we had really mature trees that are overhanging and provide that canopy and that really nice look to the street. This street is a really ugly street. Sorry, Black Nugget Road, but it really, it really needs, and I think the intent of the standards were to bring more green, more canopy, more, you know, more of that beautifying of the roadways to Issaquah. And so that was part of the intent of my previous question is, could we use the land above that wall to plant trees or landscape or provide some mitigation for this, what is going to be basically a wall? And it's going to have some of the same visual problems that the current wall has, it'll be prettier, but it's still going to be a wall. And over time, that's going to, you know, could get graffitied and all of that. And so I'd really like us to think about how we could possibly mitigate that big blank wall with some landscaping, greenery, some ways that we can look to, to just soften that up just a bit. I think this is a great opportunity to really engage our community and to be open to creative suggestions from our residents. And so when we go out to the public with some different options, I think we should just have a willingness to listen to the thoughts that people have when they see our plans for that roadway. And I know that the residents of Issaquah really love trees and greenery, it doesn't have to be trees. You know, there's, you know, some of these huge grass things are really, are really nice softeners as well, so I'm not just focused on trees. But I think the intent of that, of the standard is to make our roadways more green, more lush, more canopy, et cetera. So bottom line, I agree entirely that a median strip with trees is not appropriate for this roadway. But I'd like us to look at some creative ways that we could work with the project to, to at least carry out the intent of that standard, or try to, as best we can within the engineering guidelines that we have. So is that clear? Okay.
Great, thank you, Deputy Council President. Councilmember Hall, your thoughts?
Yeah, sure, really well said. I was thinking a lot of the same things when we look up at Squawk and the deviation there. We were able to step back and say, what is the intent and is it being fulfilled anyways? And because there are so many trees and because it's so green up there already, we could say that the purpose is being filled in another way. We can't say that here. And it, Deputy Council President DeMichele is, you know, at least partly right that, that the intent behind these standards is to make it green and walkable and some shade as you're walking along and creating some resilience for the walking experience, which, which we wouldn't have without this. So that makes it challenging. That said, I don't see an alternative. It seems debilitatingly expensive to move past the wall. It seems like you've made a very compelling case, just like you did up in Squawk, that our comprehensive plan policies tell us that doing this kind of work in critical areas is a no-no. So because of those two things, yes, I agree that we should move forward with public engagement with designs that accommodate the administration's designs that don't meet this, the landscaping part of the street standards. But I agree with Councilmember DeMichele, it makes me very uneasy that we would then be creating a walking experience that is vastly different than what was intended, as opposed to the walking experience up on Squawk, which wouldn't be vastly different than what was intended. So I agree that finding kind of creative alternatives seems like a good idea. If it's possible to create a very nice walking experience on one side of the road at the expense of another, maybe that's something we look into. I know Newport Way Northwest, part of that, Newport Way Northwest, Southwest, Northwest, part of that was considering not having sidewalk on one side of the road for preservation and the slope. Is that something worth considering? I don't know, but at least as for right now, I think that you've made a compelling case and yes, I think we should move forward with your recommended version. But again, actually, well, I'll say one more thing. Again, it does concern me a little bit that so soon after us considering change, having a deviation, we're now back. It makes me think there are, while there might not, we might not have identified other projects where this might come up again, it makes me think that there are more coming up between now and when we have that policy decision in 2025. So anyways, again, looking, very much looking forward to that, to that policy conversation, seeing what TAB has to say about it, but yeah, those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I have a couple of, couple of thoughts, and they're all actually on a little bit of a different track. And they kind of go to, I think this is very different than what we saw with Squawk. I thought Squawk was pretty clearly a case of, there were a lot of mature trees that we didn't want to have to disrupt so that we could conform with the standard. So we said, well, go out and look at what the standard should be and do we need to have broader criteria other than simply public safety for a deviation to the standard? And I think that's the track that we were talking about that we're on, right? Where we're, we're going to go into TAB and gain their input, and then we'll come back to this committee, and then next year, we'll be adopting probably new street standards that will have a broader criteria. So I, my thing is, I think this actually is a public safety thing. That wall is a public safety hazard, and so we have to do it and we have to do it in an economic way. So in a manner of thinking, I think you can justify the things that you're talking about as a public safety consideration. That being said, the, what I really want us to focus on is, yes, let's go look at how we can build this, this project out and, and take this road, first fix the friggin' wall because it's, it's, it's a, it's a hazard. And then secondly, how do we make the road as positive as possible? But the bigger question, the bigger challenge that we've got to solve for is, what are the criteria that we can apply in a consistent manner so we can come back and, you don't have to come and talk to us, you can say, oh, yeah, the exceptions for the streetscapes are this, this, and this. Because we should have ordinances and standards in place that are conformed to and variances are minimized. So let's take a look at it. We've got a couple of test cases where it's like, oh, okay, here's one where it conflicts with our, you know, climate action plan, our comprehensive plan, you know, our Tree City USA, all of these things are important to us. So what is our criteria I can apply to say, okay, in that situation, I should have had an exemption? Or this one where I've got another situation where it's clear we need to do this, right? There, I don't think there's any argument that we shouldn't be having exemption to the standard, but let's make sure that we do it in a consistent way so we can point to it and say, yeah, the reason that we're not conforming to the standards is because of this. Because last time when we talked about this, my fear was the slippery slope, which is a steep slope, too. So, you know, we don't want to be kind of rolling down, rolling down this hill of every time we find something that is a little bit off, that we're coming back and looking for an exemption. We want to be consistent with our own rules and regs or they have no meaning at all. So that's, that's my, my go forward is, yes, absolutely, positively gotta do what you're talking about because this is not a piece of real estate that lends to what we want to do, but we've got to fix the underlying streetscape code so that we've got a well-defined set of exception criteria and conditions. That's my thoughts. All right, anything else, Deputy Council President, Councilmember Hall?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, just a couple of comments on some of the concerns that were raised.
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you. This is a complicated situation, and one of the points you've all made is concerns about what precedent this sets and what are the parameters. I think as you heard from John Mortenson earlier, we believe that this is the last of these prior to that larger discussion, so I just wanted to amplify that point. Secondly, these projects are complicated because of the extensive community involvement that the city council and this mayor have requested that we go through. And so what you're seeing tonight really is just the first little chip of what that community involvement is dealing with the street standard. The makeup of the wall, the aesthetics of the wall, the other, those other factors are not before you this evening, but are a very big piece of what this will all be about. So I don't want the committee or the community to think that we are trying to solve problems merely with an exemption to street standards, that there is going to be a lot of other discussions. But just sort of in the, the area of order importance, we needed to come to you first before we went back to the community and said, we're not going to follow our rule. We just, we need to get some concurrence before we do that. But the comments made regarding aesthetics, we've heard loud and clear, something we are already thinking about. And as we have these discussions with the community, we want to be transparent, we want to be clear, but there's also sort of a pecking order. And the first piece of that pecking order is what you have before you tonight with the street standards. So by giving us some flexibility with that, we'll be able to start that conversation. And then we'll also then begin to start talking about the other pieces of this, which will include what the wall looks like, what materials are used, other aesthetic issues that may not have anything to do with. So I just want to make clear, especially for those in the community, that this is a multi-phase process. Other communities would skip right to the end, and we are not other community. We start in a particular order of things, and tonight, we are starting with street standards rather than simply saying, here's a solution we think will cover all of these things. We start six spaces behind that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, any of you, but when we get to the point of actually talking about the, this capital project, TR 033 or whatever it was, the wall, we'll have a more in-depth discussion about what that's going to look like, what it's look and feel is going to be. This is just us kind of saying, keep on rolling because you can move forward with eliminating one of the constraints that you're perceiving.
Absolutely. Because we agree with what the committee has said tonight, this is a major safety issue over time, and that we do not want to get so caught up in some of the Issaquah technicalities of all of our projects, we do not want to lose sight that we need to replace this wall and do it as expeditiously and as responsibly and professionally as possible.
Absolutely. All right, all right, Jim, the administration, you have what you need to move forward? Okay, I'm seeing nods, that's good. Councilmember Hall, Deputy Council President DeMichele, any announcements? All right, I saw a thumbs up from Councilmember Hall. So with that, we're at the end of agenda. Thank you all for this evening, and we're adjourned at 7:58.